Good evening, Commissioners. If we'll come to order, we will begin the six o'clock consent agenda, the resolutions, proclamations, and announcements portion of our meeting. The first item on the agenda is a proclamation honoring Dr. Harry C. Whitey Hitchcock. Or do we want to come back to that? You want us to come back? Okay. Unless objection, we'll come back to that one. The next one is a proclamation for the President's Volunteer Service Award, and that has been requested by Mayor Terry Frank. Mayor Frank. All right.
She, Mayor Frank, she just stuck her head in.
Okay. I have yours.
We'll get it straightened out here in a minute. Yes, go ahead, Mayor, thank you.
All right. We have a lot of outstanding volunteers here tonight, whereas the President's Volunteer Service Award is a national volunteer awards program that encourages citizens to live a life of service, and whereas the national award honors individuals whose service has made positive impacts on their communities around the country and inspires those around them to put words into action. And whereas, led by the Americor and managed in partnership with Points of Light, the President's Volunteer Service Award Program allows certifying organizations to recognize their most exceptional volunteers. And whereas, the Anderson County 4-H Extension Office is a President's Volunteer Service Award certifying organization and is now recognizing local 4-H participants, both youth and adults, who have given of their time, knowledge, and talents to serve their fellow citizens. And whereas, Danny Bridges Jr., Bailey Brown, Sadie Gray, Bristol Brown, Lydia Calhoun, Riley Mazingo, Emma Grace Bridges, and Brylee Gray have each received gold awards for their volunteer efforts by completing between 96 and 143 hours of volunteer service in 2022 and have been honored as President's Volunteer Service Award recipients. Likewise, Alice Ogan, Skylar Mazingo, and Laura Gray each completed between 28 and 124 volunteer service hours last year and received bronze awards as 2022 President's Volunteer Service Award recipients. Together, they all completed 1,197 volunteer hours last year. Now, therefore, in recognition of the outstanding accomplishments of our local President's Volunteer Service Award honorees and the positive examples they set for others in our community, an acknowledgement of National Volunteer Week, April 16th through the 22nd, 2023, we, Terry Frank, Mayor of Anderson County, and members of the Anderson County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim April 19th, 2023, as President's Volunteer Service Award Day in Anderson County, and we wholeheartedly thank the honorees for their dedicated leadership, their voluntary contributions of time and labor, and their compassionate hearts for service to the community. Volunteers?
Hello, my name is Donna Carter, and I'm the County 4-H Extension Agent. I can't tell you how proud I am and Brans Stanford, our 4-H Program Assistant, how proud we are of these volunteers and all that they have done. And Mayor Frank, if you'd be kind enough.
Absolutely.
Our first honoree is Bailey Brown. Danny Bridges Jr.
I get to work with Danny sometimes, too, so I can testify his volunteerism.
Not so fast, Donna. Chairman Anderson, would you come down? And Commissioner Vandergriff?
Let Commissioner Vandergriff grab her glasses.
A resolution recognizing Ms. Donna Carter upon her retirement from Anderson County's University of Tennessee 4-H Extension Program. Whereas Donna Carter has dedicated her professional life to the service of others, having served a total of 33 and a half years as the 4-H Extension Agent in three states. And whereas, a native of Louisiana, Donna grew up in a military family and has lived in a dozen states across the country. And whereas, upon grad, high school graduation, Donna attended Berea College in Berea, Kentucky, where she earned a Bachelor's of Science in Agricultural Business. She went on to earn a Master's of Science in Agriculture and Extension Education from North Carolina State University. And whereas, Donna Carter served from 1989 to 2004 as 4-H Extension Agent through North Carolina State University, then she moved to Ogden, Utah for nine years, where she served as a 4-H Extension Agent through Utah State University. Finally, she moved to Anderson County, Tennessee, in 2013, where she served as the County Extension Director and 4-H Extension Agent through the University of Tennessee. And whereas, Donna has led thousands of students in numerous 4-H programs across the country, leaving them all with invaluable memories, educational opportunities, and life skills they will surely use for years to come. And whereas, though Donna Carter will retire March 3rd, 2000, sorry, 2023, she isn't completely leaving the world of 4-H behind. She says she plans to continue educating and sharing her skills on a volunteer basis through a variety of classes for both adults and students. "It will still feed my soul," Donna recently said of the 4-H program she loved. Now, therefore, be it resolved by members of the Anderson County Board of Commissioners, meeting in regular session on this day, the 21st day of February, 2023, that we do wholeheartedly recognize and honor Ms. Donna Carter for not only her decade of dedication to 4-H programs in Anderson County, but also her 24 years of prior service to 4-H programs and students across the United States. Her passion and love for 4-H and her work engaging our youth to reach their fullest potential will never leave, will forever leave, an enduring impact on Anderson County. Duly passed and unanimously approved this 21st day of February, 2023.
I saved the best state for last and the best county, right? The best 10 years. I have been such an honor to be the 4-H Agent here in Anderson County. We have grown an incredible program, and it's not that Donna grew an incredible program. It's that Donna, joined with Ms. Bree, and a wonderful team of Extension Agents have grown a great program. But it doesn't matter how much Ms. Bree and I worked. We couldn't do it without the volunteers, who last year gave nearly 1,000 volunteer
She really has built an incredible, that's what leadership, an incredible program.
hours. I'm talking, in addition to the service these children have done, another additional 100,
And I know Jay can testify to this as well. This woman is up here at the courthouse all hours, and we are losing an incredible asset.
1,000 volunteers hours supported our county 4-H program. People who were judges, people who taught classes, people who were camp chaperones.
I know she said she's going to stay involved, but if you're up here, you're working, you hear something going, you come out to the hall, it's Donna.
And again, that wouldn't have been enough. It is our business supporters and donors who give us the additional funding and support
If you drive, I've forgotten a piece of paper, I look, here's Donna rolling something out. This woman is amazing.
for this program.
Donna, we're indebted.
It has been the incredible joy to be in a county where elected officials like yourself
Thank you, Mayor.
and our entire community champion the 4-H cause, and it's been just a complete honor,
Was that, both of your resolutions requested, Mayor? Or do you still have one?
and thank you so much, and thank you, Mayor.
That, that was it.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay.
We surprised her.
Next. Requested by Commissioner Foster. All right. And the next one is a presentation honoring Game Changers Program Coordinator, Rachel Baker.
Yes. I was supposed to give a, like a flash drive to somebody. There you go, sir. Okay. All righty. Well, I'll just, while we load that, just want to say thanks to everybody for having me. Again, my name is Rachel Baker. I'm the Game Changers Program Coordinator for the YWCA. I know, I mean, I'm from and live in Blount County, so less familiar with this area, but as most of you maybe know, the YWCA has a location, you know, in Anderson County, in Oak Ridge, and even more specifically, the Game Changers Program that I work with, with the YWCA, is authorized to serve and only facilitate in two counties, being Knox and one of them being Anderson. So I attend the monthly Anderson County CCR meetings with a lot of other talented folks in this room, and was invited to speak and just tell a little bit, try and move that up, a little bit more about Game Changers to you guys. Where am I? Point to the back. Okay. Not tech savvy, so we'll see how this goes. Maybe.
That one behind you is working.
Oh, okay, okay. I'll follow that one then. Okay. So there, this is sort of just our general informative Game Changers presentation. If I did the whole thing and all the video clips and all that great stuff, it would be a long time, so I'm going to kind of skip over a few things, so just bear with me for a bit. But yeah, just very quick, I know I don't have a ton of time, summary, again, if you are or are not familiar with the YWCA, we are, you know, a nonprofit. We operate in five counties, the surrounding counties, but again, Game Changers specifically is just in Anderson and Knox, but the YWCA was started in 1899, and then our Knoxville location, our sort of headquarters per se, was founded in 1925, so been around for a while, serving women and their children who are leaving domestic violence situations, and just serving their families in, you know, different victim advocacy programs in several different capacities. And then Game Changers, again, like most of the work that we do, is survivor-focused, victim-centered. The content that we've created, the videos, the curriculum, has come from just a very victim-centered and survivor-focused approach. Very proud to use the voice of the people that we serve to create these curriculums like Game Changers in particular. And a lot of the times, programs might approach things either victim-centered, or, excuse me, preventative, or, or serving victims, sort of post, you know, whatever situation they have gone through, and those can kind of get siloed, but this is where those things overlap, that it's a victim-centered, survivor-focused approach in a preventative program. So Game Changers, let me see if it'll go, is a 14-week preventative curriculum for middle school boys, where they get partnered with an adult male mentor to talk about a lot of the things I've mentioned, like domestic violence, dating violence, healthy relationships, healthy masculinity versus unhealthy masculinity, things like that. So that is what our program is, who we serve, and what we do. Let me see, again, some more videos. I wish I had time. All of them, again, these were made by, for Game Changers, specifically for our program. So original creations that we show, and these videos would be ones that are shown in the curriculum group, so to the, to the boys when they go through the program. Just giving some examples of their impact on the actions they do or do not take, conversations they have with their peers, things like that. So, let me see. Okay, again, Game Changers talks, or is a victim, excuse me, centered program, using a lot of the stories from the victims that we serve and real-life experiences. Just some examples of what, again, I've kind of gone over it, but what the, what they might talk about in the group and in the program. A big thing is reducing objectification. A lot of our boys have not ever really even heard that term, or maybe not know what it is, and so we want to, or if they have, we want to introduce it and redefine it in a new way. Just, for example, one of the activities that I know that they do with the boys is, well, sidebar real quick, a big part of it is obviously the curriculum, talking about these sensitive, important topics every week. They'll do that for about 30, 45 minutes. Again, this is once a week. And then at the end, they will have some sort of rec time, which most of the time ends up being basketball, just to form and deepen that bond with, with their mentors and form that important relationship. So they're playing basketball naturally, so they'll use basketball as an example and to kind of give the boys an idea of this concept. So they might say, when you throw the basketball, or when you dribble it, or when you throw it to the ground, do you think, you know, oh my gosh, did I throw that too hard? Did I hurt the basketball? You know, should I have done that gentler? Did I hurt its feelings? Or should I not, you know, do this or that? And no, we don't, because the basketball is an inanimate object, and we don't think about inanimate objects in that way, and that historically, and even presently, that are, those are still some ways that maybe women are being treated and like an object and less of a human. So just an example, again, to kind of open their, their minds to some of these concepts and things like that. Let's see. This is just one of, an example of some, you know, media or collateral that we might use for our mentors. Again, we could not, we wouldn't have this program, we could not do this work, even like it was just mentioned earlier, without volunteers, and for us, those, those look like mentors, specifically the adult male mentors that are partnered with these middle school boys at such an important, malleable time in their lives. You know, we just don't have the capacity as a nonprofit to employ all the men that we would need to run this program, so we rely on their volunteer of their time and energy and all those great things. And specifically use the term mentor to kind of hone in even more on the intention of their role and their time and their efforts in this program to really be a mentor to these young men. And so that's one of our mentors that has been with us for a while in our program. And then again, youth-centered, so just knowing our audience and who we're working with and how to connect with them, very intentional, again, in the curation of the program and the structure and truly every detail. And then bystander intervention, again, is another thing that they talk about a lot with the kids, which is, you know, just don't, not to be a bystander, and one of the videos shows that really well, of what could or could not happen, should you choose to participate in something quick. I'm a pretty long-winded, not a great short storyteller, but I'll try to encapsulate, one of our videos has, you know, a boy at a fraternity party or something, and it shows a girl who's obviously had too many drinks, and she's walking around, and, you know, he goes to sort of a hypothetical thought of opening the different doors of what would or would not happen to her had he chosen to, to step in and, and help her in that situation, and just how that could have changed her life, changed his, and all those different kind of things, of what could happen if you step in, or more sort of severely, what might happen if you don't. And so not to be a bystander when you see something bad happening or hear something bad. You know, it's not, we're not about telling these boys to physically and literally jump into a violent situation, but more start with, what are your peers talking about? You know, sort of the locker room talk, per se. Change the conversation and the narrative at that level, and then we'll go from there. So just how to not let things happen in front of you, and to take action, and the importance in that. And then again, the mentorship, our messaging throughout the program, very consistent and intentional. And then the training for the mentors, too. It's not, these are, these are hard conversations, and we recognize that, a lot of vulnerability required from, from the men leading the, the program, and that's what's so special and critical and important, is that it's, I don't really know many other places or spaces that where men are having these conversations with young boys, and the impact that will have hopefully on, on their future and as they grow to, to be men. And so, you know, we equip these mentors to be successful in that, so there's some really quality training, and just are, sort of equipping them to be successful as well is very much a part of it. These are, again, just some more things that we go over, like that are problematic, so, you know, the perpetrator approach of, you know, don't rape, and, you know, don't be a bad guy, and, and just, you know, you could be a perpetrator, or it could end up looking like this for you. Be careful how you, you know, what situations you put yourself in. It could make you look this way, and it's more on how to make the, sort of divert the, the boy or the man from ending up in trouble, and less on how do we help women and serve victims. And then failure to acknowledge their own trauma, of course, and what they might have gone through, again, and us having some tender conversations. And then, of course, the what if it was your daughter, or what if it was your sister, or what if it was your wife or girlfriend, just again, sort of implies that you should care if it's directly connected to you. But we want, you know, men and boys to care about anybody because they're just a human that exists and deserves those things. So, and then, of course, you know, being in the South and just thinking that it's mostly about chivalry, and we're not trying to deter those things, but just redefining maybe what they might have grown up with, thinking a real man was, and how that might be harmful to women. And then, more videos. And then these are just some images of our volunteers, some of the programs that we do, the, just some people that have been with us for a long time, and I feel like I flew through that, but there is so much that we could cover. But mostly, I'm just so grateful to get the opportunity to be here today and talk to you all about Game Changers. Like I mentioned at the beginning, we are authorized to facilitate Game Changers in Knox and Anderson County, and we're currently thriving in Knoxville, just doing really great, opening new sites monthly, but yet to have a site in Anderson County. And it's such a shame, because we, I would love to be in, in every county in the state, right? But just with only being allowed to be in those two counties right now, feels like a real missed opportunity to, to just have these very important conversations with, with our young men in this community. So really trying to break that barrier, get connected in the community a little more, and hopefully, just looking forward to some future collaborations. I don't think my information is on this PowerPoint, but I can send that to whoever necessary, if anybody would like that. Again, my name is Rachel Baker with Game Changers, the YWCA, and please reach out if you know anybody that would like to be a male mentor, or have any connections to schools, after-school programs. Should I mention, that's generally where we operate, and schools are a very organic setting for Game Changers, or an after-school program, a community center, things like that. So any connections like that are more than welcome. Mentors just need to be 18 years or older. We do a background check, of course, but value people with different lived experiences, so please don't let that deter you. But again, thank you so much for having me. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, we'll go back up to the top.
And I'll tell you in a minute, if you don't, who it is, as soon as things quiet down. And I'll tell you in a minute, if you don't, who it is, as soon as things quiet down. Thank you. If you don't know, the woman standing next to me is Ms. Hitchcock. And this is the younger Mr. Hitchcock. We were going to do this proclamation last month, but it just didn't seem to be quite the right time. But we're going to do it tonight. Whereas Harry C. Whitey Hitchcock III was elected by the people of Anderson County to three terms on the Anderson County Board of Commissioners, where he served with distinction. And as whereas, his life was filled with educational pursuits that included a Bachelor of Science in Forestry from the University of Tennessee, a Master of Forestry from Northern Arizona University, and a PhD in Exercise Philosophy from the University of Tennessee, where he was, you have to excuse me, I'm not wearing the right glasses, but the others are broken. Where he was strength and conditioning coach from 1987 NCAA Champion Lady Vols Basketball Team. And whereas, his lifetime was filled with service, from service in the United States Air Force during Vietnam, to teaching anatomy and psychology for sixteen years at Clinton High School to serve as county commissioner. And whereas, in 2013, he committed to sharing understanding and insight through his book, The Soul of a Teacher, where he examined the connection between education, creativity, and spiritual growth. And whereas, through passage of Resolution Number 1803-683, Anderson County honored Dr. Hitchcock on February 19th, 2018, upon his retirement from public service of the Anderson County Board of Commissioners. Yes, I took his place. Whereas, on January 10th, 2023, Dr. Hitchcock passed away, leaving behind his wife of thirty-four years, Ellen Gaddy Hitchcock, sons Derek White and Brendan Thompson, several grandchildren, great-grandchildren, a sister, and many beloved nieces and nephews. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Anderson County Board of Commissioners, meeting regular session the 21st day of February 2023, that we do hereby proclaim February 2022, 2023 as Harry C. Whitey Hitchcock Day in Anderson County to honor his legacy and to remember his life, his service, his contributions to this county, state, and nation. Our hearts are with his family on this occasion. In witness thereof, we have here to set our hands and cause the official seal of Anderson County to be affixed this 21st day of February 2023. Signed, Josh Anderson County Board of Commissioners, Terry Frank, Anderson County Mayor, Jeff Cole, Anderson County Clerk.
I just want to say thank you. Whitey loved Anderson County and he'll be missed.
Thank you.
Folks, hang on. Hitchcock family, hang on just a second if you would, please. I know we got a lot on the agenda tonight, commissioners, but I believe Dr. Hitchcock is worthy of this. If anyone would have any memories or any comments they'd like to make about him while they served with him on this board, we'll open the floor up for that. Commissioner McCain.
I had the privilege of serving with Whitey. And I use a quote that he said one time. I forget now what we were discussing, but he looked at me and said, "Son, this is not my first rodeo." And I use that quite often around my kids, you know, it's not my first rodeo. But I always think of Whitey every time I say that.
Anyone else? Commissioner Denneberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say thank you for being here tonight and know that Whitey will definitely be missed.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Mayor Frank.
I would just like to say that Whitey, there were many times where he and I were even on opposite sides of an issue. But he was an excellent educator, debater. I always learned something. He would point me to studies and we had a lot of good talks too about spirituality. And I always appreciated him. You can go back and look at a lot of county commission meetings. And Dr. Hitchcock was the man asking the right questions, getting to the heart of the issues. And sometimes we couldn't even see it until later. And you go back and look at it and he was getting right to the important point. So, yep, he was missed.
He loved being on county commission. I was the one that didn't want him to be on county commission. But he loved it. He loved the work. And I kept saying, "Stop it, stop it." And he didn't want to.
Anyone else? I'll say this, I had the blessing when I first got elected to sit where Commissioner Vandergriff sits now. And Dr. Hitchcock was on my right and Jerry Creasy was on my left. And it was a mountain of wealth and knowledge to sit between those two. And when an issue would come up, I could hear them. And we tried that ten years ago, didn't work, and such and such. Thinking, ah, that's still the problem going on today. And they really taught me a lot just by sitting between them. And there's an old rule that you always address someone by their highest ranking. In law enforcement, sergeant or lieutenant or captain or whatever. Well, Dr. Hitchcock, of course, was a commissioner. He was a doctor. So I asked him one time what he preferred me to call him, and he said, "Friend." And I believe that's the highest ranking. And it was an honor and a privilege to serve the few years that I did with him. Thank you for loaning him to us. Anyone else? If not, Hitchcock family, thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, I believe that takes care of the proclamations. Moving on to our public hearing section of our agenda. We have two tonight. We do have a signing sheet for one, so unless there is an objection, we will go ahead and take these individually. If there is no objection to that. The first one is a public hearing, Resolution Number 23-1-1073, amending the Anderson County zoning resolution to include the property at 122 Mountainside Lane, Rocky Top, Parcel 030, Tax Map 008, from A2 Rural Residential District to A1 Agriculture and Forestry District. Is there anyone in the audience tonight to speak on the zoning resolution for the property on Mountainside Lane in Rocky Top? If you are, please raise your hand, please. One.
I did last month.
Yes, sir. Okay, you don't wish to speak tonight?
Well, I think I did last month.
Okay, all right, sir, love you, thank you. Okay. Anyone else going to speak on that rezoning tonight? All right. We will move on to, commissioners, have any questions on that rezoning? Commissioner Foster.
Chairman, I know there was some discussion last month about the property and a lot of people hadn't seen it, obviously work up in Rocky Top and that's right outside the city limits. Some of the issues from the city side of things is the road is very narrow going across that, taking a camper in. But I know it's also brought up, some asked about it being a flood plain. And I know we've had a lot of rain this past week and it was quite a bit of water. That property does stay underwater quite a bit. So I know that was some of the concerns that people asked about last month. So I just wanted to give the commissioner an update on that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Isbell.
As you know, because we both went up there and I've got videos of the flooding and, you know, the narrow roads. But in speaking, having a planning commission meeting last, week before last, we talked about this because of the issues about flooding and the road size. And of course, I've told you many times, that's a great committee, very intelligent people. And they said, what your effort is here is rezon. Don't have anything to do with the size of the road or anything. It's when it comes back to planning commission to be converted to a campground or whatever, that's when it needs to be took up, the issues. Because all we're dealing with right now is just a rezoning, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Isbell. Anyone else? All right. The next piece of property is a public hearing for Resolution Number 23-2-1075, amendment to the Anderson County zoning resolution to include the rezoning of the property at the intersection of the east end of Marlow Circle and Oliver Springs Highway Clinton, Parcel 14.03, Tax Map 087, from A2 Rural Residential District to C1 General Commercial District. Before we get started, we will announce that tonight's hearing is the second public hearing on the rezoning application. And this is being done to rectify and address citizen concerns. We think the original public hearing was held in November, when we had that. October, okay, in October. So we will be discussing that again tonight. We do have a signing sheet that we have started tonight for speaking on this particular zoning request. We will go through this list first. We will try to give everyone an opportunity to speak if you can. We do appreciate the opportunity that has been given to sign up. Each person that does want to speak on this issue, you'll be asked to come to the podium, state your name and address. You will be given approximately three minutes. When we reach the 250, 255 mark, I'll wave to you to let you know that your three minutes are about done. Please wrap that up. We do that not to try to limit anyone, but to try to give everybody an opportunity to speak on this particular issue, all right? So Commissioner Mays.
I was just curious, I know there's a large signing sheet and then what was in our box? I didn't know if the group, the biggest group that's wanting to speak tonight, if they have appointed someone as a spokesperson or if there's one or two that is representing the group. I didn't, just for their sake and time.
I think this particular one is the petition. And then, I don't know if you've seen this one or not, actually, the signing sheet.
No, I have not seen that one. I was just curious if the group that's wanting to speak tonight had appointed someone just for...
Eight, eight people are on the signing sheet and then one, here'll be nine. Going along with what Commissioner Mays is pointing out, we would ask that if the person in front of you already said what you were going to say, if instead of repeating that, you just went ahead and let the next person come up and speak just for the sake of time. Again, we're not trying to limit anyone. We just want to give everybody an opportunity to speak, okay? So the first one on the list will be Tina Peterson. Tina Peterson.
I'm going to defer my time to Keith Bryce.
Okay. And I think he is on the other sheet that we have, so we'll be getting to him momentarily. Bonnie Schumaker. All right. Steve Mullins. If you would state your name and address, please.
Steve Mullins, 341 Marlow Circle. My wife and I are the ones that owns this property. I don't know exactly what happened. It kind of got approved last time. I don't know what happened, but... I'm going to reiterate some of the things I did before. But this property doesn't lend itself to the zone that it is right now. This property has been a commercial piece of property for the past 25 years. And I know a lot of the resistance that we're having now is based on the traffic. I've been living out there for twenty-some years and I've never had a problem with the traffic. And I feel like, I feel like the Dollar General is something that'd be good for the community, the revenue it brings in. I believe that I am not represented it as well as what you see here. But however, when I go to my mailbox, I've had people stop and tell me, the community, "Thanks for what you're doing." I've not went to anybody and said, "Come help me in commission." Because I didn't feel like that's what I really needed to do. I feel like it needed to pass one way or another. But I've had people stop me, I've had people call me that thanked me for trying to put this thing together. And I've had, I have had, in another area, been around a Dollar General. And it is really a neat deal on Sunday afternoon and the other things. A lot of these drivers can't drive in Marlow. A lot of these elderly people, I'm elderly myself, a lot of these elderly people, it really works for them, is what they tell me, that they're kind of afraid to go into town for the big box stores and some of that. That makes them a little nervous. So I think it, I think for the community, I didn't just, when they approached me to buy this, I didn't just say, "Hey, I'm going to sell this." I talked to people and I put myself on their side. And I said, you know, "Would I want this? Is this something I want?" And I couldn't see nothing that deterred me from, you know, saying that. I'm probably, I've got ninety acres around this thing. And I kept it up, I kept this property up. So I feel like that Dollar General, what they're going to do, I've talked to them a little bit, what they're going to do is going to be a nice little store there. I think it really helped the area. That's all I got to say. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Dean Russell. Please state your name and address, sir.
Dean Russell, 494 Oliver Springs Highway. My property is located, I could literally flip a rock from the bottom of my driveway and hit the Dollar General, proposed Dollar General property. I've had my home for twenty-plus years, pulled in out of my driveway for twenty-plus years, five, six times a day. Not one time have I ever had a wreck because I stop and I look both ways. I don't really see the traffic issue that was, you know, there was some concern from the neighbors about the issue of traffic. I don't see that. And like I said, I live right there at the heart of it. So I also think it'd be good for the community. I personally was looking forward to it. I can zip down and pick up, you know, I buy laundry detergent. And I buy, they've got a special mop that I buy from Dollar General. And it's not the Dollar General's first rodeo. It's not like they're going to come in and build some crappy building. They're going to build a nice building, they're going to landscape it out. It's going to be good for the community. And quite frankly, we've got about three property owners there. We have elk in that area, we have cattle, it's a rural area. We've got about three property owners to thank for that. One of them's Steve Mullins, the other one's Bill Witt. One of them's Steve Mullins, the other one's Bill Witt, and we got Brogdon, so they've got probably 1,000 acres tied up, and it's all farmland, thanks to them, they haven't subdivided it, they haven't put houses in, and so, you know, I think that, that the view we have is due to these guys, and for one small piece of property to cause such an uproar, for what I think's gonna be better for the community, I just can't see it, but I'm for it, I hope it goes. I don't think there's anything else for me to tell you, but, but I, I just stand, I don't really understand the uproar, but like I said, I live right there at it, I'm, I'm looking forward to it, hopefully, the county commission sees it, that it'll be good for our community, I do think that the elderly people will use it, dollars, like I said, Dollar General, it's not their first rodeo, I think they can mitigate any traffic issues with their store, they don't want their customers hurt coming in and out, so I think it'd be good for the community, so I would implore the commission to pass it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Gordon Witt?
Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry.
When does the audience just keep their comments to themselves instead of...
Yes, uh...
Leave it to the podium, please.
We understand there's gonna be difference of opinions on this issue, and certainly, like I said, we'll give everyone an opportunity to speak, but comments are interrupting, probably will delay the process even more, so if we could keep that in mind, please. Point well taken, thank you, Commissioner Mays. Go ahead, Mr. Witt, name and address, please, sir.
Okay, I'm Gordon Witt, I own the property on the north side, the only twink, only thing between my farm and this property is a railroad, I own the gravel road that joins it, and I own all the property around the Moran Baptist Church all the way to Bush Road. I'm all for it for the simple reason, you go to the Kroger's, Walmarts, places like there, they're going more catering to the older people that can't walk through these stores, and I noticed this Dollar General right over here in town, there was 10 cars within the length of this room for their front door, because people can't walk the length of these buildings anymore. It's just a convenience for older people, and there's probably 90% within four miles of this place that are older people. There's not that many young people out in the country anymore, because they, they can't buy property. That's all I've got to say about it, I'm all for it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Gail Harmon.
Thank you, commissioners, my name is Gail Harmon, I live at 461 Oliver Springs Highway, which is directly across from the proposed site, and I do oppose it, because we do live in a neighborhood, and I do think there's a safety issue, and I also think there's a potential for a decrease in our property value, and it might be something to consider if the commission hasn't already, is to have Department of Transportation come out and do a study on the highway and the traffic and the entrance and exit to that area, and I think anybody in this room or anybody that lives in a neighborhood would feel the same way that I do, they would not want to open up their front door and look out at a Dollar General store, because that's what it's gonna be. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Nathan Cooper, I believe.
Hi, I'm Nathan Cooper, I live at, on Autumn Drive, right across Oliver Springs from this site, and as many have said before, I fear there's a traffic issue, my daughter's a UT student, and the worst part of her commute is coming out of Autumn Drive and turning onto Oliver Springs, because there's lots of log trucks and delivery trucks and garbage trucks and people, so I don't want to add any more traffic in front of my neighborhood. That's leads to a safety concern that I have, and also property devaluation, as others have mentioned, when I step on my back porch, right down the hill is that property, and I see rolling hills and cows and beautiful scenery, and now I'm gonna have a bright yellow Dollar General, which is gonna devalue my property, it's gonna add noise pollution, it's gonna add light pollution, it's gonna add safety risks, traffic, I'm highly opposed to this, and please reject this to turn it into commercial. I moved into a residential rural area, because that's where I want to live, that's where future buyers of my property are gonna want to live, and we're not gonna have, we're not gonna want to have a bright, commercial, yellow Dollar General right in the middle of all of our, this beautiful rural area. As others have mentioned, people can't drive, so there, people can't walk down Oliver Springs Highway anyway to get to this Dollar General, there's one a few miles away, so I don't see that this is gonna enable our community to be able to walk to the Dollar General, and they can go to one that's already just a few miles away, please reject it, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ashley Mullins.
Hi, my name is Ashley Mullins, and I live at 341 Marlowe Circle, my husband is Steve Mullins. Just a couple of things that I wanted to address, it is my understanding that TDOT has done their full engineering evaluation on the property and the traffic flow, and they did have full approval on that on the 14th of February. The other, two other things that I wanted to address, we actually, although we have a rural area, that is a state highway, it's not a neighborhood, it, it actually is Highway 61, 61, so, that, you know, lends itself to have properties such as, you know, community stores, there's a fruit market down the road, there's a school down the road, there's storage units down the road, so it does lend itself to that. One other thing that I did want to address, if you go west on Kingston Pike from Campbell Station Road, you will come upon a Dollar General store in front of Foxton subdivision, where the average sales price is between 800 and a million dollars, and they have had an increase of 20% in property values in the last couple of years, that Dollar General went in two years ago, so I don't think that it's an issue of devaluing property, I do think it is an issue of convenience for the citizens in that area. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. And Kevin Rice? Oh, I'm sorry, Keith, I'm sorry, couldn't read my own handwriting.
Hi, I'm Keith Rice, I live on Ivy Lane, which is a small subdivision right down the hill from the proposed location, and, and, and we, you know, the community was involved in getting a petition together, which you have copies of, I believe, and of all the 50-plus signatures that we have, almost all that are within that area, except for a few exceptions you heard, are opposed, opposed to the site of a Dollar General there. The facts are that the Dollar General itself sent a letter to the planning commission and said that they expect on average 15 to 20 customers visits per hour, so that means 30 to 40 turns into and out in, in an hour, and for the 13 to 14 hours that they stay open, that comes out to be 30, 350 to 560 entries and exits per hour on average, according to their numbers. Just think about that for a moment, even close to that much traffic each day, entering and exit near a blind curve on a downhill grade, where 18-wheelers, logging trucks, and many cars and trucks speed by every day, all the residents that are here tonight, they know how fast cars go through that area, and, and whenever I pull out, I'm always surprised, even though I look both ways, when I look up in my mirror, there's a car right in the back of my bumper, and I, and I, I wonder whether I forgot to look, but I didn't, it's just cars come through there so fast. And I would also note that the owner of the parcel requesting the rezoning, he also owns the 88-acre parcel behind it, and he bought it just about three, four years ago, and he received approval last week for an added 10 feet of access to the gravel road on the east edge of this parcel, and it seems most likely that this is the first step in developing that 88 acres into a large subdivision, maybe not tomorrow, but pretty soon, and so, given, given the amount that was paid for the parcel, so this is connected right to the edge of that, so if that parcel is developed, and, and it would probably go through under rural residential, that would add a lot more traffic coming out within 100 yards of this proposed entry and exit, so that, I think, should be looked in the overall picture, not just a Dollar General, but what else might be developed right behind it, adding more traffic to an area that we already have three, at least two, and, and then this would be four busy intersections, people, a lot of people coming in and out, and as, as some other people mentioned, there is a Dollar General store within seven minutes away on the east end of Oak Ridge, and three or four more within 10 minutes, and there's also a convenience store already, right down at the corner of 61 and 95, within a half mile. And, so finally, to summarize, first, this greatly increased traffic is expected by the company themselves in this area.
Mr. Rice.
Okay, sorry.
Sorry, time's up, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can I just make one more comment?
No, sir, I'm sorry. We, we're trying to give everybody an opportunity to speak.
Okay, well, can I just counter something that was just said, just, just briefly to characterize?
Briefly, Mr. Rice, please, sir.
Alright, yes, sir. There was mention that this, this property was commercial for 25 years, that is not true, it was tax commercial because it had a, a mouse-growing business, just like the livestock business on the same property, and so, it's always been rural residential, it has not been commercial for 25 years, I spoke to the person who used to move the mice in and out, he, he took deliveries in and out once a week, so that, there was not a lot of traffic in that area.
Thanks, sir.
Commissioner, would you please ask the audience not to applaud?
Well, hopefully, I think we're done at this point, yeah, the...
I didn't know there was a side of this, if I could get on there, I'd like to speak as well.
Okay. Just a second, please. Let, let's, let's try to keep it in order as much as we can. Tina Peterson, from what I understand, you wanted to donate your time to Mr. Rice.
I wanted to contribute to him, I will go behind him.
So you still want to speak?
I do.
Okay, I misunderstood you then. Bonnie Shoemaker.
Same deal, I want, I want to speak after Mr. Rice.
Alright. So, I believe that's, that would be it, alright, Ms. Peterson, go ahead. Name and address, please, ma'am.
My name is Tina Peterson, I live at 439 Oliver Springs Highway in Clinton, I've lived there about six years, and the traffic, as they said, is atrocious, as I try to pull out onto the road, you cannot see from the curve or the hill, each time my husband pulls out, he has to watch and roll the window down to listen for traffic coming, because the traffic is so fast and, and the curve is blind, it might be funny to some of you all, because you do not live there, also, I'm speaking for these people that live, the regular people, not the rich people that live there, the regular people that don't own hundreds of acres. We do not want to have to look at a, a Dollar General store, we did not move there to look at a Dollar General store, we moved there to look at the nice farmland, we voted for you guys to represent us, and you must remember this, we will remember you, these guys will all remember you come the next election, if you don't remember us, and I want you to remember that. Thank you.
Bonnie Shoemaker.
My name is Bonnie Shoemaker, I live at 453 Oliver Springs Highway, just, that's almost a stone's throw away from the proposed property, and I've spoken several times at the meetings, and as Mr. Rice mentioned, we did have a petition that we, I took around, and he did as well, we have over 50 signatures from people in the area, and I've got, prepared to say them real quickly, and it may be a little repetitive, but please, I'm gonna, I won't take long. I echo the comments of Mr. Rice regarding the traffic safety issues of placing a busy commercial business on the stretch of Highway 61 that is heavily traveled by commercial, industrial, and private vehicles, where there is a down gradient and a blind curve between two busy intersections. This would result in increased traffic from construction vehicles, delivery vehicles, and customers pulling in and out, and add to the existing serious traffic concerns. A Dollar General would increase the noise levels in the area and create light pollution, increase criminal activity in the area, and decrease property values. These are tangible, environmental, legal, and economic issues. But perhaps more importantly, the commercial business would cause great detriment to the pastoral rural area that all of us who live in the area enjoy, and which was a factor for many property, property owners in deciding to reside there. I also have permission from Dorn Kyle, whose family previously owned the land, I have permission to quote him from today, he said that he sold this parcel to Mr. Mullins so that he would have an easement to the rest of the farm that he purchased from Doc, from Mr. Kyle, the rest of his property, and had he known that this issue would arise, would have never sold it. As evidenced by the number of signatures on the petition and the large number of people in the, in attendance at this meeting, who might raise your hands, after hearing, after having been made aware of it by the second public notice this past month, we do not want a Dollar General store or any other commercial business in this area. As Anderson County taxpayers and voters, we ask that our elected officials, whose jobs are to represent our interests, rescind the initial approval to rezon this parcel from rural residential to commercial, that would allow this project or any other commercial endeavor to be built in this area. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, those of you who are not on the list that wish to speak, and again, we want to give everybody an opportunity to speak, but what we want to try to do is keep the repetitiveness down, so if you've already heard somebody say what you were going to say, please pass on your turn. How many in the audience are going to speak for the zoning change? For? If you're going to speak for the zoning change, and how many are gonna speak against it that haven't already spoken? Okay. The gentleman who's gonna speak for, you may come to the podium. Please state your name and address, please.
Will Robinson, 1248 North Shorewood Lane, Carville, Tennessee. I'm the civil engineer, working with Dollar General on this site, so, been a lot of discussion about traffic, it's a state route, so when we're on a state route, we apply for a permit with TDOT, and they, they're pretty, they've, my life's been a lot harder recently because of TDOT, because they've, they're, they really look at every detail of this, so what we've submitted is a right out, left out, and, and one way in, so it's a three-lane, 36-foot-wide entrance, and it is, it's a 55 mile an hour road, so there's been a lot of discussion of site distance, so TDOT's very prescribed.
Mr. Chairman.
TDOT, TDOT's very prescribed, so there is a manual, it's available online, you can look and say, if it's a 55 mile an hour road, the site distance is required to be X, in this case, it's 610 feet in each direction, so we sent our surveyor out, sent him back out to survey the entire, over 600 feet in each direction, did a site distance study, and the site distance is good, so we resubmitted additional information, including that, to TDOT, they reviewed it, the only, we do not have a permit handled, state that for a fact, but the only thing that holds it up is transfer of the deed, they will not give my client permit for property they do not own, so as soon as that happens, we'll have a permit, and it will be all clear with TDOT, but we've done everything they've asked for, they're comfortable with it, and, and it's, and it's their road, so, yeah, there's a lot of traffic there, but we meet the standards of the people that own the road, so, it's, I don't know, I don't know how else I could say it, so.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Alright, there was three that wanted to speak against, you go first, sir, please come to the podium, name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Brett Horick, I'm at 108 Ivy Lane, just in that subdivision off the...
I'm at 108 Ivy Lane, just in that subdivision off the, right across from the proposed site. Um, I'm one of those young homeowners that couldn't afford property, but I managed to get, get this from my own hard work. Um, I chose to live in a rural area because I wanted to be away from commercial properties and businesses. I wanted to be in a nice, quiet area with little light pollution, noise pollution. Um, and in addition to everything else that all these other people have said, um, against it, Dollar General is just not the type of business we'd even want in this area. They're already under fire from the state of Ohio because they don't charge the right prices at the register that they advertise on the shelves. That's not the type of business we want here. They don't treat their employees right overall. I'm just not a fan. I don't want any businesses in this area. I lived in a rural area. This is my first home. Didn't want to be in a city. Wanted to be somewhere nice and quiet. Don't want that ruined. Not done. Thank you.
Name and address, please.
Yeah, hello, my name is Dominic Giuliani. I live at 231 Cumberland View Road. I own the former property that was, uh, the Kyle's residence. So, I'm very familiar with this, with this site. The, uh, the site used to be at my, my address. In fact, I got a lot of Steve Mullins', um, mail that I brought to him. Uh, just to be clear, I'm against the, uh, the proposal. Uh, so, I just wanted to quantify some things. I'm a, I'm a mechanical nuclear engineer, work at the lab. And so, um, when I look at this, I think of a, you know, what, what exactly would happen? I, I take, and I look at the numbers. So, looking at a semi truck, which we have a lot because of, of the hardwood business down the road, Oak Ridge Hardwoods, coming around that blind curve with a, with a downhill grade, which adds thirty percent to the, uh, the stopping time, stopping distance, assuming three-quarters of a second, which it, for reaction time, which is the average reaction time for a CDL driver. Uh, we're, and moist ground, we're, we're looking at one thousand five hundred feet for a semi truck to stop. I have three young children. My oldest is nine. She's not far away from driving. This is a dangerous area. I should've said that to begin with. Um, there've been multiple wrecks there. Uh, and of those, at least two have been fatal. This comes from the Marlowe Volunteer Fire Department who responded to it. So, you can look that information up if you like. Um, so, so the fifteen hundred feet that I just, that I just quoted from my calculations is more than two times the available space that's there. That is not considering any fog, that we get a lot of. That is not considering large rain. That is not considering ice. That is moist conditions. In ideal conditions, there's still not enough space, seven hundred and fifty feet. It's dangerous. I don't want it. Thank you for your time.
George Barton, I live on 104 Ivy Lane, which is pretty much down the road from, from this. Um, I, myself, only moved to this area two years ago for the views. Um, I actually lived right near the Oak Ridge, or Dollar General. Um, and because of the traffic around there, the, the clientele that came there, that it, it actually caused my house that I had there to be devalued. I don't want that for here. Um, I, the, the, just the, in Oak Ridge, yes, you do have the foot traffic that you would have a hard time here, but it's not going to stop some. Um, and it just brings in a, a likelihood of having people in that area that are going to be less likely than I'd want in my neighborhood. So, that's all I had to say.
Thanks, sir. We will go ahead and close the public hearing. The votes will be taken during our regular agenda beginning at six thirty. No, sir, Mr. Rice. Thank you. Seven thirty, yeah.
If, if you're here for the, uh, to comment on the library, uh, be sure and fill, sign in on the, uh, red clipboard there.